By Wormer Rogers Doran and is it Rusen? Rusan? Close enough, okay. You can correct me, that's fine.
Thank you. Good. As you mentioned, we're presenting the fiscal year end June 30th, 2025 audit. As we usually do, I'll give a high level overview. If you want more detail, let me know. I know we provided drafts of the audit report, AFR, and single audit. So rather than go through page by page, I'll just mention some of the more notable highlights. And you can stop me if you need to. The audit went well, as in prior years. You know, the results of our testing suggests the district is in excellent financial position, maintains accurate financial records, spent money responsibly, and is in compliance with state and federal regulations. For the audit report, the first couple of pages of your audit report are the beginning of the basic financial statements, in which for you are presented by fund. And notable there is that, at the end of the year, all of your funds had strong financial position, or strong positive fund balances.
I'm just, I'm sorry. I just want to let the board know, all of these documents, if you look under 4.07 acceptance of fiscal year 25 audit, they're there for you. Sorry, thank you.
No worries. And then also, so for the year, the district's financial position or fund balances increased by nearly $1.7 million from the prior year. So going from overall fund balances of just over $45 million to just under $46.7 million for the year. For your AFR, and the AFR is the report that's required to be filed annually with ISB, that is due October 15th. The district's legal debt margin, so you have an annual debt limit, which is based on the EAV, and your legal debt limit at just over 192, almost 193 million. With 36 million in bonds outstanding, your legal debt margin as of the end of your fiscal year was 156,365.35. And there, with the various metrics that are measured in the AFR, so the different financial ratios that are meant to measure the district's financial condition or financial position, on a scale of one to four, the district has a 3.9 projected profile score, which earns you the designation of recognition, and that is the best possible designation for the AFR. And then for the single audit, I mentioned, so a single audit is required when an entity spends over $750,000 in federal money for the year, which you're well over that. So you're subject to what's called the single audit requirement. It means we have to perform additional testing, and then some additional reports have to be filed with the federal government. There were no findings, which is the best possible result from that. And for the school year, we tested the school nutrition program with no findings. So resulted in a clean single audit report. And that brings me to the end of the report. Is there anything specifically you'd like me to address?
Any questions or concerns? Thank you for coming out, for your time today.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. It was pretty easy to take, right? Okay, next up, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Is there anything you want to highlight from this before we take a vote?
Excuse me. Yes, I do want to mention that the audit, which you have just heard a little high level summary of, is also a part of the consent this evening. 4.09 is regarding electricity procurement. This is seeking the board's approval to authorize us to solicit final pricing from suppliers. And this, of course, is based on the market, as we see with electricity. So this isn't authorizing any action other for us to continue to watch and do this in conjunction with Cornerstone Energy Group. And then, when the time is right, give us the ability to lock in what will be helping us to have lower energy rates going forward. We have two acceptance of donations this evening. Teapot Management generously donated 50 backpacks with school supplies, and Immediate Cure generously donated $500 to Manuka Junior High School. And then, as we mentioned in our finance workshop discussion this evening, there's a health-life-safety amendment that is authorizing us to include just the amendment, this isn't anything with the purchase, for the chiller at Manuka Junior High School. This includes it as part of the health-life-safety. This project itself will be publicly bid in compliance with state bid regulations. And when we reach that point, then we would bring back that award to the board for approval at a later date. And then also 4.12, there's a purchase of a buildings and grounds truck that is needed to support our ground crew efficiency, operations, snow removal, and fleet capacity.
Any questions or concerns on those items? Can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Schamberg?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. We will move on to our action items, 5.01, adoption of the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay, Mary Robinson, our chief school business official, will answer any questions that you may have regarding the budget.
Okay. So lots of finance tonight. So, just to kind of stick with the general theme, I'm just going to go over the things that really have changed since the last time that we talked about the budget. I'll say not much has changed, but there are a few items that I just wanted to highlight. So looking at our revenues, same as they've been the last couple months, just the difference in our local, state, and federal. And then, again, nothing has changed here. We're looking at, the majority of the taxes that we collect are, have already been established and levied from last year's levy, and that's the majority of this year's budget. So we know that we saw that EAV increase. And so, there's been no changes in any of the local revenue assumptions. And then when we look at state, I've already updated the board. We do know that we did drop to a tier-two district, and that we are receiving around $108,000 of new state funding. That hasn't changed. And then our federal assumptions. There's been, I think throughout the last few months, we were unsure of all the federal funding, but now we have solidified those amounts. Doctor Stubb reported on that last month, but here's just the breakdown of what we receive federally. And then moving to expenditures, this is just our breakdown. As always, we see about 74%, 75% of our budget are salary and benefits. So the new things I wanted to talk about, we've included all of the new staff recommendations, all the salaries. One thing that you'll see that there's been an increase is our Grundy County Special Education co-op tuition. So the actual tuition costs haven't increased, but it's just the amount of students that we have in the program. So that is something that you will see different compared to the tentative budget, to the budget that is up for approval tonight. So we have that meeting with the co-op, and they give us finalized numbers, last-minute move-ins, just change in IEPs. And so now we did have additional students transition into the program, and so we are seeing an increase in that line item of the budget. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, the last two items basically on the larger purchases. The last one is the chiller replacement project, which there was the item on the agenda that you just approved to move that to life safety, so that is Fund 90. So that has been added to the budget, and that is in one of the non-operating funds. So you'll see it on, in the summary, on the lower portion of the budget summary. And then the other item is the swing gates. So we're constantly looking at ways that we can improve the traffic situation in our main campus. So one of the suggestions brought by the principals is to do some permanent swing gates. So we're currently seeking quotes for that, and we're trying to figure out the best placement for them. But funds have been put into the budget to make that happen for this year, to hopefully improve our traffic flow. So with that, we still are presenting a balanced budget. We've talked a lot about operating funds versus the non-operating. So the top section of this summary is the operating funds. And you'll see that overall, we're looking, it's that fourth column, that we do have a budget surplus of $4,000, which basically that's just a balanced budget. 4,000 in the grand scheme of what our budget looks like is just pretty much a balanced budget. And then the biggest change at the bottom in the non-operating is that expense of the chiller at MGHS. And it's not the entire amount, because it is a summer project, so the majority of the work will be completed. It's one of those timing issues. It might get paid out before June 30th, it might not, just depending on when. Usually they'll do progress payments. So I did put a majority of the project in the budget in case it does get finished and build out before June 30th. And then, overall, makes for a surplus budget of $311,000. Yeah?
On the chiller?
Mm-hmm.
Do you book it when you could build? For the, you all decide, do you send it payments? Or do you book the 800 or whatever it's going to be, once it's paid?
Usually they do-
If you get it June 15th, but don't pay it until July 15th?
Yeah, usually they'll do progress payments. So they'll, I'll start to do some payments, especially for the design, from some architect payments. That will happen probably in the spring. But then, once we receive the piece of equipment, they might do a progress billing for part of that. So I would never expect for a large project like this to get one invoice. It will be multiple over. So you'll start seeing invoices probably May, June, July, and then those May-June ones will hit this budget. It's a non-operating fund, so I'm not-
You do it when you get the invoice? That's when?
That's when I pay.
This fiscal year?
Yep. Yeah. And I'm not real concerned, like if for some reason, we only pay a little bit of it in this year, and then I have to budget it for next year, that's fine too. I'll just, next year's budget, I'll make sure I have the balance of whatever we don't pay. And so we talked a lot about fund balance tonight. So based on this budget, we will still be meeting fund balance, and not even just overall accounts, in all of the different funds, we are meeting our 25% fund balance. And so tonight, we ask the board to adopt the budget.
I just want to say, after the audit, the balanced budget, all the finance conversations, I know I speak for the board when I say thank you again. We're very appreciative of the work you do. Having the highest, you know, audit rating we can have, having a good Moody's or whichever rating we're under now, and the balanced budget, all just really speaks to the work you do for us. So appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions or comments? All right, with that, I need, tonight, a motion to adopt the 2025-2026 budget as presented.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2025-2026 budget as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schamberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we'll be moving forward to discussion and information items with the diligent community proposal.
Yes, with this section, I am providing some information regarding the online platform that the district uses to manage online board agendas. We've used this solution for probably more years than anybody can count, probably since the time that board agendas became electronic online. We've been notified that the Board Docs is being phased out, and so we're being required to transition to a new solution. It's just no longer going to be supported after December 31st. So I've provided some different information, that you can get a preview of that. You can ask some questions. It will provide us with a kind of a next-generation platform solution that, you know, not only has a more modern look, but has some additional features that will be useful for us in our board agenda management. There is a seamless transition if we continue with the diligent community platform, because they will migrate all of the previous documents that are already archived in Board Docs. So there would be a period of time when we are going through that transition period, that Board Docs is still available, and that stays available and read-only after that. And then we would work together as a team to transition, to have the appropriate login, and be able to navigate and access. And obviously, we would note that change for our public. There's advanced searching features and a lot of other aspects that will be of a benefit for this change. So we won't lose any critical records with this transition. And essentially, we have to make a transition, because after the end of December, it would no longer be supported. So I've attached some information in a little preview video, and there's some even more in-depth information. Happy to answer any questions or, or any of that with you. In the next board meeting, we'll be seeking approval to get that process started. Our cost does increase from about $3,200 to approximately $6,000. We haven't had an increase in quite some time. Lori, in supporting this transition, did help us work for a long, a lower percentage for a longer term on the contract. So relatively speaking, we'll save some dollars over the term of that contract too. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I was just going to ask about the cost, and you covered it. Thank you.
I'm hoping the advanced search features are a benefit. I know this, we have all struggled through Board Docs a little bit over time, so hoping this change will be a positive and more useful platform for all of us.
Yeah, it definitely has more of a kind of user-friendly intuitive look that you might see in a, like a more modern platform. And there are some advanced features as well. We're just going to make the base-level transition and hold off on exploring any of the kind of à la carte add-on features. But it certainly, I mean Lori and I attended the webinar, and it definitely was very easy to navigate. And there are some increased features in there as well, too. There is a four-minute overview video that, you know, you can watch that and take a look at it. And then, of course, there would be the next level when we do make the transition, so the board would have the ability to kind of have their, it's kind of a mini-training. It's not super extensive, but you need to be able to navigate it appropriately and understand about how you can navigate the agendas, how you can annotate your own agenda, like taking your own notes, where you can highlight different pieces with the published agendas and things like that. So we would, you know, this would take several months to make the transition. And so in the upcoming months, we would schedule a time for the board to be able to be trained on that.
Okay, I have one question. What is going to happen to all of our past board agendas? Will they be accessible still? Will they be backed up? What's going to happen?
Yeah, they will, all the previous agendas and supporting documentation will still be accessible. So in the background, they will migrate that all over to the diligent community platform. And then for a period of time, when we start the transition and we officially move over to diligent, Board Docs will still remain available just as an archive, a view-only archive. And then when we make sure that everything has, you know, transferred successfully, we'll only operate in diligent. And when a community member goes to the website, the link that they click on would bring them to that platform. But you'll be able to search back agendas and documents as far back as the time that the district first started with Board Docs.
Are there other platforms out there that we have considered? Or we're just doing this one because of the archiving?
The archiving is a great advantage, because otherwise, we would need to figure out a way to maintain all of the previous. In doing an initial comparison, cost-wise, it was not advantageous to move to a completely different solution. And then in looking at the functionality in some of the other platforms, it's pretty limited in this space, to be honest with you. But some of those, I find to be even difficult to search or navigate in its current form. So we really don't have a ton of options to consider. And then looking at the importance of maintaining the archive, we hadn't had a price increase in, you know, quite some time. So we figured it was probably best to make this, and this is, I think, the most commonly used. And it's definitely one that would, you know, you really wouldn't feel any big bumps in the transition by continuing on this path.
Any other questions? All right, we can move forward with administrative reports.
All right, I just have a couple of highlights from the Student Services Board Report. I wanted to, one, highlight at the very beginning of the report, where we go over the EE codes, or what we call EE codes, or the Educational Environment Codes. And that just helps us keep an eye on students and how students are receiving services. And I do want to highlight that within Manuka 201, as well as our co-op programming, we really do a great job of keeping students in their programs closest to home, unless their disability is warrant something more significant. And that's especially highlighted when we look at the number of students that receive programming in separate private facilities, like a therapeutic day school. We have less than 1% of our students with special needs population is in a therapeutic day school, and the state target is over 6%. So we do a phenomenal job, and that's a credit to our administrators, our staff, our related service providers, as well as the cooperative staff that we work with to keep our students closer to home. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then I also wanted to highlight, Ms. Erica Martinez and Mr. Jay have been working great to share out a lot of our community resources, a lot of the different events that are occurring in our community. And you guys can see some of that in Ms. Martinez's report in here, as well as information that's going out on Parent Square, and what's on our webpage and our social media. So if you haven't been following those, I strongly recommend that you do, because there's some really great activities just this weekend. Here at MPC, they helped this, Dr. Luer put on Champa Palooza, which was a great event for the students and families of Manuka Primary Center. And there's, every single week, there's another great thing going on. This month, actually, they started a campaign to highlight the importance of attendance in school. So we have been going around and visiting schools. We started last week. Jones had the best attendance for two weeks. They earned a flag, and they're going to pass that flag to the next school that has the next best attendance. So we'll just keep going school to school and celebrating those things throughout the month of September. But it's definitely, these great ideas are definitely in Mr. Jay's hands and Ms. Martinez's hands, and they have been doing a great job.
So I'm going to ask a, probably a question that's too difficult to answer in this moment. But going back to the less than 1% of our students that we are feeling the need to outplace in that situation, verse the over 6% of the state target. My assumption, and I know based on how good your team is and everybody in the classroom is, is that we're doing that with the most benefit to the specific student, but is it also with the least impact to the classroom? In the sense that the numbers are good, but what's the review process to make sure that while it's less than 1%, it should be less than 1%? Does that make sense?
Yeah, for sure. So what we're looking at there is our students that require intensive supports, and that they might be attending programs through Grundy County Special Education Cooperative, rather than going to a therapeutic day school. So because of the intensive programming that the co-op offers, that we're able to utilize, we're able to use some programming through there. So that's kind of the analysis that we'll do, is looking at, would that student be more beneficial, you know, being on a bus, going, you know, maybe half an hour, an hour away, as opposed to a student that could, a program that is here in our community or within Grundy County through the co-op programming?
And I know our relationship with the co-op has been so strong and beneficial. So is it maybe that other communities don't have that ability in that sense? That we have this here, and we can utilize it? Is that, like what you're saying, is part of why we're able to do that?
Definitely, yeah. That is one benefit of us being able to keep that specific number low, is that the co-op provides such phenomenal intensive programming.
Thank you, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, no worries at all.
Thank you. Mrs. McCarrow, Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you. One of the things in my report for this month that I wanted to kind of point out, that the PD Steering Committee met last week, and we talked about kind of big picture PD steering plans. You saw in last month's report, we kind of talked about what our big focus is in terms of professional development for our staff. So as a district, we met in May. Every building had their building SIP team to talk, and we looked at things. And some of the big focus ideas that kind of came out of that was PLCs. So really kind of upping our game in terms of professional learning communities within our buildings and grade levels and teams. Core instruction, really making sure we have the best core tier-one instruction. Research shows that if you want to provide interventions and enrichment to students, the best tier-two and a tier-three for that is a better tier-one. So we're really honing in on our core instruction strategies and implementation of curriculum there, and then data analysis and data literacy. So in terms of the work that you'll see with our professional learning communities, curriculum work, and instructional coaches, and I talked about it a little bit, but I'm going to kind of talk about it together, is working on some high-impact strategies that will allow us to basically kind of get the biggest bang for our buck. So on the front of my report, you see a visible learning kind of image. And you'll see that I kind of highlighted collective teacher efficacy and teacher clarity. Those are big, high-impact strategies that we are really honing in on through the lens of professional learning communities, our core instruction and data. So those two things, if you look in the chart, in the middle is 0.4. And that is, that effect size is what a typical student will learn in a year's worth of learning in a school. So anything on that blue side of that image that you see, that is, could be, it accelerates student learning beyond a typical year. So some of those really high-impact strategies on the right, that collective teacher efficacy, has a 1.57 effect size, and then teacher clarity, 0.86. Those are really high-impact strategies that you'll see through professional learning communities, through our curriculum meeting work, through the instructional coaches, working with admin, to how do we support teachers in this? So we're working at aligning learning intentions, what that success criteria looks like for those standards. And it's really going through, there's kind of four big PLC questions that we talk about. It's, what do we want students to know? So what is that learning standard? And do we all agree, is there teacher clarity about what that learning standard looks like? And then question two, how will we know that the students have learned them? And then that will help facilitate stronger conversations in terms of the third and fourth question. Question three is, what do we do when kids haven't learned it? And then question four is, what do we do to extend the learning when kids have learned those things? So we're really honing in on those things, and you'll see it through data shareouts with some of the scores that we'll look at. You'll see it inherent through the Ed Committee and our curriculum meetings that go on, and the coaches are helping the admin provide professional development for the staff to really hone in on those things. So the team and the district is really working hard at staying focused with a few strategies and being intentional about the professional learning, the time dedicated to those things, so we can really up our game with some of those high-impact strategies. So I just wanted to kind of point those out to you guys. And I'll touch more about them as we start looking at our data within each of our buildings and what we're doing to help raise the bar with some of those strategies. Questions?
Human Resources, Dr. Massey, do you have anything for us? You're good, okay. Technology, Mr. Souza?
So how are we doing? I mean, how are the bus drivers, and are we fully staffed? Come on. Give me a break.
Good evening, Mr. Cronin.
It's always good to see you.
What can I do for you, sir?
So bus, are we, how are we doing with bus drivers? I mean, is the bussing all good so far?
Well, Mr. Cronin, if you've got wood near you, knock on it, please. Shut me off there.
My neighbors in the street love it.
Yes, sir. So we, Mrs. Robinson, Ms. Kinder, and I work with Ms. Sloan Dempsey. You guys met her, I think, our last board meeting. She was with, they're knocking it out of the park, in my opinion. I know we had some, you know, you always got the kinks to work out at the start of the year, but I think things are going pretty well, pretty smooth. We just, Ms. Robinson talked to Sloan, I believe, today? Thank you. And Sloan said they've got quite a few potential drivers in the hopper. We just don't have anybody currently with CDL, so we're going to have to expedite the training and whatnot for those folks. But she's feeling pretty good about the quantity of folks that we have sitting in the wings that just need to be trained to become drivers. But I think things are looking pretty good. We had a few growing pains here and there with the transition to the high school taking over and us, you know, working with them, but we've, great relationship with the administrators at the high school. And, you know, I think things are, things are going pretty well, all things considered.
I know last month you were down.
We're looking good. Our administrators are killing it. Yes, they are. They, they're out there just interviewing and interviewing. I know this evening- out there just interviewing and interviewing, I know this evening, we had a couple of teachers on the consent agenda personnel report that, you know, have left us. We do exit surveys, as you guys know, we keep an eye on those when folks leave us, and we try to grow, learn and grow from reasons that folks are leaving, I can tell you, you know, both of them are either, one of them's leaving the state and the other's leaving the field, so, you know, looking to learn a little bit from those folks as to why they're leaving us, but our administrators hopped right in, we have a technology teacher already replaced at the junior high, and, you know, that person's going to be able to hit the ground running, found somebody who has the licensure, and, you know, we didn't have to get creative in filling that position. And then our numbers, we've, we were all summer telling you guys, our numbers at MES were pretty low, and our kindergarten was sitting at 72, so the departure of the kindergarten teacher allowed us to comfortably absorb those students into classrooms with teachers that already know our system, know our curriculum, and those numbers went from 14, which were glorious and wonderful, to 18, which are still glorious and wonderful, and in alignment with the other buildings that we have in the district as well. So we were fortunate that, again, our principals jumped on it, came up with positive solutions, you know, it's not ideal to lose somebody in September, but we are really lucky that we were able to plug and chug and figure things out and not really skip a beat as far as, you know, our staffing's concerned. We're always, if anybody's listening, looking for subs, whether it's teacher subs, aid subs, our program assistants, we have some folks that are posted for leaves, so, you know, for one reason or another, somebody may be taking a leave of absence, so we have some of those out there posted, but, you know, I checked before, you never know these things, they change all the time, but we are pretty filled, and I'm pretty happy with the way things are looking at this point across the district for staffing. Knock on wood. You're welcome, sir, thank you for the opportunity.
Any other updates from our leaders? Anyone highlighting? Mr. Sousa's hiding over there, waiting for some, you know, music or something, now we're-
You're correct, I hope.
Okay, thank you, so as you can tell, there is definitely a lot of, a lot going on, a lot of efforts, each of our building leaders submitted a report with pictures and updates, and they and their teams are working very, very hard, and so we know with any kind of focus on efforts with school improvement, or any kind of just upping the game, kind of raising the bar in certain areas, or introducing something new, it takes time, it takes an adjustment, and we know, we don't, you know, we don't ignore that fact, we know that that puts effort and work on our teams across the district, and everyone is, you know, rising to the occasion and working through some of the bumps of any, you know, change or adjustment, so we are very grateful and proud that we're just continuing to increase our efforts and continuing to see the positive impact that that's making for our kids, I definitely wanted to make a special note of that. Our school improvement teams, each building has a team, and so the efforts that the teams are going on, we had a chance to visit with each leader, set a team of leaders at each building, and we'll be visiting meetings to see how their efforts are going and where they're experiencing, you know, challenges, or what's going really well, what are the celebrations, and we'll continue to do that. We are in the phase of our first administration of the Panorama Survey, and that's related to positive school environment and positive work environment, and that is happening for students, it will soon be happening for staff, and then following that, will be the first opportunity for families to share their voice with us, and it will be the first time that we're incorporating any voice data with this initial collection into our improvement efforts at the district level and at the building levels. All of our buildings have been engaging in the retraining for our safety protocols, our crisis management plan, and engaging in drills, and they've been doing a phenomenal job in partnership with our police departments, that I just wanted to make note that those drills are occurring, and we're doing a great job with that. We have some exciting reveals coming up because of the PTO efforts and fundraising efforts, I wanted to make mention of Oxable, their outdoor learning space is standing tall and will soon be unveiled, we're very excited for that, right, Mrs. Underhill? And then a long time coming, through no fault of anyone in the district, through just some production issues with the electronic sign at Menucha Elementary, again, another effort of a great fundraising effort by the PTO and community, we'll soon be able to unveil our new sign at Menucha Elementary, fingers crossed, Mrs. Mergeri, right? And then as Dr. Stubb mentioned, there's a lot of efforts going to ensure that we are improving our communication and engagement with our families and all of our stakeholders throughout the district. The level of participation in events has been tremendous, and our efforts to continue to engage around student growth and progress, and just the celebrations of all the good work that is occurring will continue. Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Kinder? For board topics tonight, I just wanted to state that the board came early tonight and did a finance workshop with PMA to really kind of deep dive into our current state of finances, our debt structure, and kind of projecting to what's coming, as we start to kind of work through what our facilities assessments have showed us in needs in our buildings, so appreciate the extra time of everybody coming early so that we could do that, and continue to work towards that fiscal responsibility for our community while still providing for our students and staff. Any other board topics?
I just wanted to mention National School Attendance Month, and it aligns with Superintendent Kinder, a little under-your-best-with-your-voice today, playing through, playing through, so it aligns in that way, and thank you for being here, and for everyone who attends our school every day.
We do have executive session tonight, so I will need a motion to go to executive session for ongoing collective bargaining discussions and a discussion of personnel matter.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss those items.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Thank you. Yes, no action tonight as a result of executive session, thank you.